Okay, welcome to today's Select Board meeting of April 22nd. My name is Roxanne Musto. I'm filling in as Chair for this meeting. Chair Wells is not able to make it today. So I'm going to call the meeting to order, and we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. So, public comment. We allow three minutes per speaker for a total of 21 minutes. And if you're interested in speaking, raise your hand if you're online, and if you could sign in at the desk over here. I don't know if people already signed in. Oh, thank you. And Nick, you'll go back. The cumulative, yeah, okay.
And just so folks know, if you're here to speak related to the acumen of needs for the cable license renewal, that will be a separate public hearing at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Regular public comment would be for all of our.
This is the public hearing. Public hearing will wait until then. Or we can put it here.
We had it posted for a general counsel.
That's for the public hearing? Probably that one up there?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Am I on?
I am not on.
All right, let me find my clock. Okay. So first, we have Meg Matthews. If you'd like to come up, and please just say your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me? So I'm Meg Matthews, and I live at 59 Cheever Street. And I am here tonight because it is Erin Bradley's last Select Board meeting. And I'm here to thank her for her three years of service on the Select Board. She's been a steadfast supporter and an advocate for our town, our schools, our community services, our families, and our elders. She's been willing to say the hard things and ask the hard questions in the service of figuring out solutions. And we're really lucky to have had her fighting for us. Erin, I'm grateful for your willingness to step up and serve our town and give so much of your time and talent. I know it's a thankless job at times, and I'm sure these three years have crept and raced all at the same time. But you keep showing up and working to make our town better. And I know you'll find ways to continue to make your impact felt in positive ways moving forward. In one of your last initiatives and acts as a Select Board member, you took the time and initiative to research and record the financial cost to date to the town as a result of our noncompliance with the MBTA Communities Act. And these amounts included funds expended, like election fees and attorney fees, as well as grants we're ineligible for because of our noncompliance. Things like funding for a COA, Council on Aging Van, we lost because of our noncompliance. And the total, as you've recorded, is over $1 million and counting. So I think this is important information for our community to have, and I appreciate you doing the legwork to bring this to the town's attention. And it's just one example of many of the efforts you take to dig in for the data, to inform your constituents, and to inform decision-making. So this tenacity is going to serve you well as a lawyer down the road. And hopefully, we won't have to knock on your door for any other legal things in Milton. But we know you're going to be a great attorney. And I wish you all the best in your next adventures, which will hopefully come after a nice, long post-Select Board rest. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Janet Ferrone.
Hi, everyone. Janet Ferrone, 71 Central Ave., Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. And unsurprisingly, I'm also here to really honor Erin at her last Select Board meeting. I look at you as my hero, or heroine, but I don't like the sound of that word. So we'll go with hero. Just the courage that you have shown, the commitment to justice, using your voice. There's people in this town that are unheard and don't have the access. And the thing that I love about you is that you've always been able to speak for people who just don't have the access. So, as you know, that's a value of mine. So I really appreciate that. Meg said a lot. But you've always been here for us, for the town. And it's just been an honor to be part of your journey, part of your campaign. So we thank you for everything you have done. And if you'll indulge me, I just want to bring you something.
That's all that we have signed up. Is there anybody online? It looks like we have one.
Deborah Felton has raised her hand online. So I'll allow her to speak now.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't prepared.
Well deserved.
Okay. Well, one more. Although Meg and Janet, I think, summarized it all. But I want to thank Erin Bradley for her dedication and service to the community. Erin, we appreciate your transparency and honesty for the past three years. And my family wishes you the best in finishing law school and embarking on your legal career. We're excited to see where everything takes you. And I have one other thing I would like to comment on. I noticed on the agenda, you're voting on more articles for the June 16th special meeting. But there is nothing there on the MBTA community laws. And I thought that that was why we were having a special meeting in June. So that seems to be glaringly absent from your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else, do you, Nick?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you for everybody that spoke during Citizen Speak. And we have some citations here. Which one is what? Let's see. Are they in a certain order here, Nick?
Uh, they should be two.
Okay. I was not expecting that. Yeah, it was very nice. Okay. Okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is we're going to have some citations here for the Mass Legacy Tree Program. Nancy Chisholm is here. If she would like to come up, and please come to the microphone.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. So the citations that you'll be, I'm guessing you'll be reading them, Roxanne or Nick, are to recognize, as part of the show, I am on the Shade Tree Committee. I'm also here with the Chair of the Shade Tree Committee, Laura Beebe. And we have focused the last couple of years on trees of significance in Milton. The DCR has a program called the Legacy Tree Program. And we, anyone can recognize a tree in the state of Massachusetts for its significance, primarily driven by its size, its beauty, but also it could be the location and a few other criteria. And we decided to recognize two trees. Both happened to be beech trees, European beech trees, in the town of Milton. One is located at, or was located, at the Forbes House Museum, a mammoth tree. And the other one is located at 45 Walnut Street at Justin and Jen Wren's home. In fact, the tree at the Wren's home was cited not just as a legacy tree, but its significance is even greater because it is noted as the fifth-largest beech tree in the state. And if you haven't seen this tree before, it is really just beyond impressive. So, and it's right around the corner from where we're sitting at the Council on Aging. So in 2024, we, the Shade Tree Committee, submitted the request to have these trees considered. And we received notification that they were recognized by the DCR. The DCR, in fact, goes out to every tree that's nominated across the state and sees if it meets their criteria. So we were thrilled to see that these two trees were recognized. And we really want to say thank you to these folks. Unfortunately, the reason we want to thank them is because they're loving care to these trees. Unfortunately, the beech trees are being impacted by a disease. And most copper beeches, if you look around, or I'm sorry, European beeches, if you look around the town, have had to come down. Milton Hospital has just taken down a number of them that were dead in the front. It's also driven by, or prompted them because they're doing the expansion. But they were gone. Cunningham Park, the same thing. Forbes House Museum has lost, we believe there's two that were virtually identical. We may have lost one, but we lost one of the two, but we're hoping it wasn't the one that was recognized. But either way, that tree, as well as Jen and Justin's, were both up for nearly 200 years. Okay, and again, if you were able to go by 45 Walnut Street, if you just think about the history of that, that tree there, as well as at Forbes House, were planted by the original owners. And to think that it's been there gracing the property and giving the, really, the residents of Milton over 200 years another pleasure as they drive by it is particularly significant. So our hope is, this is just the beginning of going around town, recognizing trees for their significance. It doesn't just have to be their size. So if there's anything else, you know, if someone feels a specific attachment to a tree for whatever reason, and they want to just send us an email and reach out to us, we'd be happy to submit it. We don't even need to be involved. They can go to the DCR website directly and submit the nomination form. It's pretty straightforward. But this was really a way to thank these two individuals and to bring attention to residents in town and the significance of the trees that we have in the community.
That's great. Beech trees are beautiful, and it seems like they're getting this beech leaf disease.
Yes, yeah.
Right? Yeah. So I'm going to read the citations, the first one, as an official citation. Be it known that the Milton Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Heidi Vaughn, Executive Director of the Forbes House Museum, in recognition of receiving the Legacy Tree Distinction in 2024 for the European Beech Tree located at the Forbes House Museum by the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Forestry Program. Through your commitment to caretaking, Milton residents continue to enjoy its magnificent size, magnificent, magnificent, magnificent size and beauty, which has graced the property for nearly 200 years. Be it further known that the Milton Select Board extends its deep appreciation that this citation be signed by the Select Board on this 22nd day of April 2025. Well, thank you. Do you want to come? And we're going to sign it, and then should we just sign it now? Okay. Do you want to sign it, and then just pass it around? And then we'll give it to Heidi.
While you're signing it, can they hear me? Oh, yeah, yeah. First of all, thank you very much. Thank you. And I did want to reassure you that the tree in question still stands.
Oh, good.
No worries there. We had to take down a different beech tree to the right of the driveway that was not nearly as magnificent. So the one in the center is still there, and you can visit it. Perfect. Oh, that's great.
Great.
Yes.
Good, thanks. Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll have to get Richard to sign that.
Richard?
Yes, we can send a copy to you.
You want to pass it back?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And I don't know if Jen and Justin Wrens are here?
I think Justin is here.
You can come up if you'd like and say anything about your tree that you'd like to say. I think we all have to take a ride by and see the tree now.
It's literally two houses down at 48 Walnut. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Roxanne and Select Board. Obviously, it's a privilege. The tree was there way before we were, when we bought the house 15 years ago. As you mentioned, the European beech is sometimes a challenge to maintain and take care of. So Jen and I feel it's absolutely our obligation to do everything we can to keep the tree as beautiful and healthy as possible. So we do have an arborist that comes multiple times a year to check on it and provide antibiotics and everything else we can. And locally, the Hunt family has done a great job in trimming it and maintaining the branches and so forth. Because at some point, it is, like everything else, going to probably succumb ultimately. So we're going to do everything we can to preserve its beauty and keep it for the town as long as possible for many years. We had a swings from, and the children, we have a bus stop on the corner. It's in the corner of Walnut and Fairbanks. And once, once the kids got older in middle, not mine, but neighbors' middle school, and they were going so high, and they were like, this could be a little bit of a liability. We took it down. But it still is quite the hangout spot for many people. So it's a privilege to own the home and to have the tree in our yard. And so we'll do everything we can. We appreciate Nancy and everything everyone's done to recognize the tree. And thank you again.
Thank you. And I'll just read this citation as well. So this is official citation. Be it known that the Milton Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Jen and Justin Wrens in recognition of receiving the Legacy Tree Distinction in 2024 for the European Beech Tree located at their home at 45 Walnut Street by the Department of Conservation and Recreation Forestry Program. The beech tree is the fifth-largest European beech in the state. Wow, that's pretty impressive, I have to say. Through your commitment, through your commitment to caretaking, Milton residents continue to enjoy its magnificent size and beauty, which has graced the property for over 125 years. Be it further known that the Milton Select Board extends its deep appreciation that this citation be signed by the Select Board on this 22nd day of April 2025. While we're signing it, I'll go on. So the next thing is number five. Oh, sure.
Kind of an odd background.
That sounds good. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, but.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Here, why don't you just take a step forward? There we go.
Tree.
It's a beech.
It'd be nice if it had the beech tree in it, right? That's not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'll handle it once you have your signature.
I'll make it official.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
So now we have two other proclamations. We have one for Earth Day and one for Arbor Day. Would any of you like to read one?
I'll read one.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Go ahead, Josh.
Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion, I didn't, sorry. By reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees increase the property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, we, the Milton Select Board, do hereby recognize April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the town of Milton, Mass.
Thank you.
All right. I think I am on. Whereas the first Earth Day was enacted in 1970 and engaged over 20 million Americans to advocate for a cleaner environment. And whereas Earth Day now has become a worldwide event and has highlighted some of the most critical environmental issues on the world stage. And whereas Milton is blessed with a wealth of bountiful woodlands and waterways, often most visibly showcased in the Blue Hills Reservation, as well as our parks and riverside walking paths. And whereas Milton supports projects that demonstrate and encourage energy conservation, sustainability, and the usage of renewable energy. And whereas the town of Milton challenges every resident to help in conserving and protecting the environment by green activities such as recycling, water and energy conservation, tree planting, and active education about environmental issues. And whereas this year, Earth Day will celebrate its 55th anniversary of promoting the value of our planet and respect for all who live on it. Now, therefore, we, the Milton Select Board, do hereby recognize April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day in Milton, Mass. We encourage all citizens to join us in efforts to help and protect and preserve our environment for future generations, given this day, Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025.
All right, very good. Next thing is, we have a public hearing, which is item number six, but we're going to start that at eight o'clock. So we'll go on to number seven, Discussion Update, Report of the Municipal Broadband Committee Regarding the INET Replacement Project and the Fiber-to-the-Home Feasibility Study. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. I'm Mark Day, and I am joined by my fellow committee members, Joe Chamberlain and Rob Lynch. And we're here to talk to you about the master plan that we recently sent to you. So can we go to the next slide? The quick summary here is that we're going to review what the original vision was, how we've progressed on it. We'll talk through a summary of the consultant's findings and recommendations, and end with a call to action. The vision is to think of Internet access as a utility for the residents and businesses of Milton. And concretely, to have a town-owned fiber optic network as municipal infrastructure comparable, for example, to the way that the water lines and sewers and roads are municipal infrastructure. We have progressed to the point where, on the issue of replacing the INET, that we have completed a detailed network design, and we are on the verge of starting construction of that network. Next. The INET, the Institutional Network Replacement, is inherently dual-purpose. The core reason for it being funded was to replace the existing institutional network and to be a drop-in replacement for the existing network that was obsolete. It was modestly changed so as to adapt to changed circumstances. But the existence of the new INET creates an opportunity. The nature of this kind of network is that it is very easy to overbuild it in terms of having substantial excess capacity, substantially more capacity than is needed just for the INET itself. And so this new network that we're about to build also could be the backbone of a new piece of infrastructure for the town that could reach to the homes and businesses. It is an option, not in any sense a requirement. Next slide, please. So if we took the previous slide showing progress and we divided it slightly differently, we'd find that there are a few things that have to do with the INET in terms of the detailed network design about to go to construction. And there are some pieces that relate more to the fiber-to-the-home idea. In particular, Town Meeting has established a municipal light plant, which would be the legal entity that would operate a fiber-to-the-home network were the town to do such a thing. But most of the remaining steps to achieve fiber-to-the-home still lay ahead. Next slide, please. Yeah, let's go forward one more. So we're going to summarize the report from a consultant that we engaged, that the Select Board funded using unallocated ARPA funds. And that report is on the town website, on the Municipal Broadband Committee's page. And we're just going to go through some highlights there. There's a lot in the report. Next, please. So before getting into it, it's important to keep in mind that the costs in here give a sensible sort of sanity-checking idea of what could happen. But they're not in any sense definitive or guaranteed. The overall conclusion of feasibility is likely to hold up for at least a few years. But it does have a shelf life. There will come a point at which these conclusions are no longer valid, and the study would have to be redone. Certainly, if there were another provider of broadband services to enter the town or exit the town, many of the conclusions of the report would need to be revisited. Next, please. We asked the consultant to consider what we saw as the political constraints of doing this project in the town. So this is something that would be voluntary. People would sign up for it. It would not be funded by taxes. The capital costs would be bonded. The bonds would be repaid by the revenue from service subscriptions. And that the homeowners who signed up for the service could be asked to provide capital in order to make this work out financially. So the high-level summary here is that the capital cost involved would be $23 to $25 million roughly. And that the subscriber cost for doing gigabit service would be $66 to $69 a month. That would drop to about $42 a month after the financing is paid off. This is below the comparable incumbent services from RCN, Verizon, and Comcast. This is, again, just a high-level take on it. There's lots of ways in which this data is further analyzed in the report. Just to note that there are a variety of utility models currently in the town. For water and sewer, it's a municipally-owned infrastructure that the town maintains, has essential interconnections with the water supplier, and the town bills property owners. For trash pickup, there's a municipally-owned infrastructure in the bins that the town maintains. There's a contracted pickup service, and again, the town bills property owners. Next slide, please. There are also examples of utilities that are not municipally-run in Milton. For electricity, Eversource does everything. For gas, National Grid does everything. Next slide. Our current Internet is more like gas and electricity than it is like water or trash pickup in that for all of the current incumbents, the company owns the infrastructure. It maintains and repairs it. It takes care of the interconnections with the Internet, and it does the billing. It takes care of the interconnections with the internet, and it does the billing. Next slide. The utility model for a hypothetical Milton fiber-to-the-home is something that would have to be decided. And it's partly a political choice, or partly a best interests of the town choice. The piece that's clear is that the town owns the infrastructure. But then there are open questions about who is it that maintains and repairs it? Who ensures that there's the appropriate connections to the wider internet? And who does the billing? Next, please. A simple municipal model is that the town does everything. Maintains and repairs, interconnects to internet, does the billing. That would require personnel who are not currently employed by the town and expertise that the town doesn't currently have. Next, please. There's an outsourced municipal model in which the town owns the infrastructure but engages outside vendors to do repairs and to do the, what you might call the, the software side of things. This vendor one and vendor two are just kind of placeholder concepts. They could be the same entity, but they don't have to be. Next, please. And in an open access model, the town owns the infrastructure. There is a particular vendor who supports that infrastructure. And then there is a set of vendors who are taking care of the ISP duties, the job of connecting customers to the internet and billing them for it. This is like the previous model, but it allows the multiple ISPs to compete while they are on the same municipal infrastructure. I want to draw your attention to the fact that this is the model that Quincy is currently pursuing. Next, please. So things that are open for decision. There is the question of the degree to which the town wants to control or influence the desired outcomes for digital access. There is the possibility that the town could invest in a municipal broadband infrastructure and take a position on that. But as I said before, that is not in any sense required. If the town wants to build such a thing, then there needs to be a decision about what the governance structure should be, and in particular, to choose between varieties in which the town is operating the service versus outsourcing it in some way. And then the question of whether this vertically-integrated single ISP or a competitive market is more in line with what the town wants to have. Next slide, please. So our consultant noted that it is likely to be very helpful for us in making this decision to keep an eye on Quincy, that they developed a master plan in 2020, and that they are currently engaged in the construction of a fiber-to-the-home network. And so there are documents explaining that, and there are definitely opportunities for us to simply stay in touch with them and find out how it's going. Next, please. So our concluding call to action is that the Select Board and the town as a whole needs to decide at some point whether the town should pursue fiber-to-the-home. That doesn't have to happen right away. It can be deferred, but not indefinitely. And the Quincy experience is likely to be an important input in deciding what the town wants to do. If the town wants to pursue fiber-to-the-home, the Select Board might well consider setting some sort of timeline for what the next steps in that process might be. And that is our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Zoll?
Always be counted on for a question. This is, I think, really interesting, and, and, you know, I, I have to imagine, you know, it's fun to think about the Select Board maybe 125 years ago, thinking about electricity in the same way. You know, like, do you really need it? Is it really going to make a difference? You know, should we? It, it's true, right? These are the sort of things that, that happen over the course of, of the lifetime of, of a town. And so we're kind of at this really fascinating point now where we can think of, and I think we should think of, the internet as an essential utility comparable to electricity or, or to water or, or sewer. And I say that for a couple of reasons. I think, one, we have our, you know, students in this town who rely extensively on the internet to be able to interact with their teachers, submit assignments. This is at the high school level. But also, from a business perspective, you know, not having the internet at your, at, at a business is not acceptable. And for the, for senior citizens, many of them rely on the internet for contact with family and friends, you know, access to information. So I really deeply appreciate the, the thought that's gone into this because I, I do think that this is kind of one of those tipping point moments for the town. I, I'm also grateful to Quincy for sort of being a guinea pig for us and being a couple of years ahead of us on this model. I guess my, my big question here is, obviously, we, we can't sort of continue to delay this forever. And we've talked about this a little bit before, but I think it would be helpful for residents to understand when you talk about overbuilding, and overbuilding the network, and it's relatively easy and relatively cost-efficient to do. I think people can hear that, and they can worry that this, you know, would be wasteful if we decided to overbuild, and then we decided not to take full advantage of it, that we would be, you know, obviously, everybody in Milton is very concerned about finances probably now more than ever. So I'm just, I would be curious for you guys to explain a little bit for folks that maybe aren't familiar with what overbuilding, the, the capacity would look like.
Yeah, as soon as I said overbuilding, I thought, oh, that's not the right word because everyone's going to get very, very squirrely and very unhappy about that. And, and so the thing to realize is that the, the fiber that is laid is, is probably the cheapest part of the entire experience. It's all of the cost of building a network like this is in the fact that you have to have people out there digging trenches and putting things up on poles and so on. And what that in turn means is that it's, it's very cost-effective to, instead of buying the, the, the fiber that sort of has the minimal capacity that the town needs right now, it's basically a trivial amount of additional money to be getting something that is, you know, 10 times more. And in fact, depending on what the details are there, it may in fact be more economical to buy the fiber that offers more capacity because that may be a more popular choice and may accordingly be, be priced lower. And so it's a, it's an area in which if we attempted to sort of minimize the overbuilding, we might actually be practicing a false economy. Not only would we be giving up capacity that we could have had for relatively little, we might actually wind up spending more money. So I think that the right way of thinking about it is to say, we're building the INET for sound reasons of replacing something that was obsolete. We're basically getting more capacity than the town needs for, right now, for free. Right? It's not that we've sort of gone and done something crazy to get it. It's just the way that fiber optic networks work. And so that's what's really creating the opportunity for us to go and do something more interesting, if we so choose.
That's very helpful. Would you mind if I asked a follow-up?
Go ahead, sure.
So I, I know, I, so from that perspective, again, I, I do think it's helpful for us to put that, if you could travel back in time, look, because when folks were installing electricity for the first time, they had no idea the pace of change that would happen with, you know, the uptake of electricity. We have the benefits of the 20th century and understanding how quickly technology moves to think about, you know, planning for future capacity in a way that maybe we didn't think about 125 years ago. And if I'm maligning the Select Board 125 years ago, I apologize. I'm sure there were some very forward-looking individuals that do. But I, so I, one of the things that I've heard, that I would love to, to kind of get your response to is that fiber optic and wired in internet is sort of a thing of the past, and everything is going to be wireless. My understanding is that obviously, you, you still need to connect to the internet somehow. You can't just have Wi-Fi on your computer, it has to be hooked up to a network. But could you explain a little bit about why you think that fiber optic would still be, you know, from a wireless capacity and that with that, you know, sort of forward-looking vision, why this would still make sense?
So the, the, the observation there basically is that the wireless simplifies the question of getting the access from the, the network to the house, if you like. Wireless is, is marvelous for that kind of thing. It's not necessarily great in terms of trying to have a lot of capacity. And so what you would find if we were sort of rolling this forward and saying, now we're doing all kinds of 5G things or 6G things, and there are little micro cells on the, the phone tower and, and so on, that might well be how the, the houses were getting on the network. But the municipal fiber infrastructure would still be valuable because basically, all of those wireless access points would be trying to get to a piece of fiber as rapidly as they could. So I think that you might well find that the, the build-out of getting, focusing on fibers connecting houses might have some of the quality that you're describing, that we might say, oh, we were, we were working very hard on, on putting a fiber to everyone's house, and in retrospect, we didn't need to do that. The part about getting to neighborhoods or getting to blocks, I think, is going to be a stable value kind of regardless of what you imagine happening with the wireless.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Excuse me, I appreciate what you've done, and I'm new to this. How many towns and cities in Massachusetts do this? Have their own?
They, there's, there's quite a number that either have it or are considering it. And so I don't know the number off the top of my head.
It's in the, it's in the neighborhood of like 45 or 50. It's basically the, any town or city that has a municipal light plant. Braintree is a great example. You know, they own their electric company, Beld. So they're a good example, not of, not of cable, they got rid of that. But Norwood is another good example of a town that has a municipally-owned broadband network as well.
So they have combined the two, like?
In, in Norwood, a little rusty.
So some towns have what's called municipal light plants. So that, that town operates the electric facility as well. So in Norwood, they have.
And it would make sense that they do.
Shrewsbury and a few others are in Whip City. I worked out in Westfield, so regional approaches. These, these communities that have, out in Westfield, they have gas, sorry, gas. So out there, they have, they do gas and electric, and then also provide broadband. Norwood does electric and broadband, as mentioned, Braintree. So there's a few communities that have already built up that infrastructure already from an operational perspective that naturally were in position to jump on this some number of years ago.
And I would say in position because they have the legal structure, not necessarily because of the services they are providing. So they had the MLP because they were providing electric, but the fact that they, like, for, in our case, where we're not, we don't have electric provided through the town, that doesn't foreclose us doing internet-only or doesn't really, they, they don't really relate or, or complement each other in that way.
Yeah. I've just been in a business where it's more reasonable, I don't know if this is the correct word, but subcontract has its, like, fixed cost, whereas in-house is more variable, you know what I mean? So there's advantages and disadvantages to both.
Yeah, it, I mean, that's a real question for the town, is to, to bring it in-house, in some ways, would have the, the best control, the best customer experience. But on the other hand, it's, it's more people on the payroll. It's more complexity about making sure you have the right people and you need them.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
Could I ask, do you mind?
Go ahead, no, just go ahead. I was going to ask a question after.
So, you know, we had, as, as we were working on this, Verizon built out Fios. And I know from your survey and from the feasibility study, it's had a bit of an impact, but it doesn't feel like, and just looking at the survey, you know, reliability, people didn't really have a lot to complain about. Speed, people didn't have a lot to complain about, although I know the older Verizon DSL users may. But cost was obviously, I think it was something like more than 70% of folks were, rid, cost is poor or fair. So has, now that Verizon's built out, have you noticed or heard as it's not driving costs down, everything kind of stayed status quo, although it's just another provider to choose from? Any feedback on that?
I, I don't think we've seen a notable change in the way that people talk about their internet service. And I also do think that overall, it's better to think about it as a, a kind of a political or a, an infrastructure approach rather than a cost-saving thing. Because the, if, if we do this as sort of a, a promise that it will, it will be cheaper, it's very easy for the incumbents, at least over the short run, to falsify that by just dropping their prices. And so I think it, it's more about saying, if this is a thing that we think is important for various kinds of practical and political reasons, wouldn't we rather have it be a situation where the people who are getting our access to the internet are people who are as close as Town Hall as opposed to being people working for such, some gigantic corporation in Philadelphia or wherever?
Thank you for your presentation. Can you speak a little bit about, number one, Braintree? I know that it seemed like they got out of this business, and also with the use of satellites now. You've seen that during different wars and things, satellites are, you know, that may be the future. So I would like to hear about that.
I can describe a little bit about the Braintree decision.
Just pull that mic a little bit closer. Thank you.
So my understanding, the Braintree decision a few years ago to discontinue their cable system was really, came down to a technical decision. They basically painted themselves into a quarter, technically, speaking, over the years, using basically cable technology, you know, from the 70s and 80s that wasn't scaling. That plus underinvestment over the years in the network really degraded to a point where it was, you know, wasn't worth it. So that's my understanding of what's going on, of what happened down at Braintree. There, there's actually a good report on their website. I don't know what the URL is off the top of my head, but that's where I found that description. And what was the second question?
Satellite.
Satellite, I mean, I would put satellite to the same category. And I'm speaking for myself now, not necessarily for the, for the committee, as another commercial vendor. And I would like to echo what Ben's analogy to electricity 125 years ago. That's a often-made comparison to towns today looking at internet access as a, as a, as a utility. And as a municipality, as a town, as a community, we get together and build that infrastructure to lower costs for everybody, for residents, for businesses, right across the board. And that analogy, going back to electricity, was very prescient by all of those folks. And look what happened over the next 50 years. I mean, just think of all the industries that exploded that you had to plug into, like making appliances and cars early on, and et cetera, et cetera. And so that's a big motivation for a lot of towns and municipalities, both in the state, a lot of towns pursuing this in Massachusetts, as well as nationally, is to achieve that economy of scale for all residents and businesses, so.
And follow-up question. And with regard to the cost that you, you said, it said $23 to $25 million. That's a huge amount of money, obviously. We're, we're looking at, you know, some tough situations here. I'm wondering, you did mention, for instance, on Braintree, you said that they had the, they had a system, and they didn't maintain, and they under-invested, under, you know, kept up with it, basically. So is that also factored into this?
So the difference here is with, with fiber optic, the speeds that, the potential speeds are, are unlimited. They're limited by the end electronics that are used. So the benefit here is that where, where with coaxial cable, there was, there was a maximum speed. So the benefit here is that where with coaxial cable, there was there was a maximum speed that it was gonna hit, because it's not it's not fiber optic, it's not it's not flowing at the speed of light, right? So we know we don't have electronics right now that can capture the speed of light right now, but we have, so we can switch out as as we, so let's say we say, okay, we have we have electronics that provide for ten gig speed as maximum right now. If in the future, if we develop ones that have twenty, we're fixing the end electronics versus replacing all of the fiber, because the fiber is still there. And then with the the satellite question, it's an interesting question, it's it's if we think back to the the models that we were presenting, there's still, the satellites are owned by a third-party company, right? So it's more of, it's back to that political question of would the town be launching its own satellite for, you know what I mean, like, right? Like, if we're just going into that model, right, they're not gonna do that, right? So would there be so many companies that could that would have their own satellites where there'd be so much competition, where the costs would come down? That's certainly possible. I think more the way that we're presenting it is not just about cost-saving, but how is, what does the town and does the select board see a political value in controlling that actual infrastructure? And so that so the way in the satellite version, yeah, it would be it would be the town launching a satellite instead.
A slightly different way of answering your question would be to observe that in the report, the useful life of the fiber optic network was estimated to be fifty years, whereas the build-out and so on was was built around the idea of the electronics having a useful life of five to ten years. And so that was taken account of at at least a very gross level. It wasn't sort of the assumption that said, we'll we'll do it once and we're done.
And the cost per subscriber included in operations and maintenance charge of, I think, was twenty-seven dollars per subscriber, so it was baked into the number that Mark presented, included twenty-five dollars a month essentially for operations and maintenance for a variety of services to maintain and invest in the system on an ongoing basis.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's almost eight, I don't know, it's not quite eight, so we can.
We want to do the.
Yes, let's do the next one.
Traffic Commission?
Okay, report.
Don't you want this meeting to last as long as possible?
Discussion update approval, report of the Traffic Commission, a temporary conversion of Franklin Street to a one-way from Adams to Bassett.
Sure, thank you. So the Traffic Commission had met last week to revisit the conversation about converting Franklin from a one-way. This would be for just the portion from Adams Street to Bassett Street. We had previously talked about the traffic, the construction management plan for the forty B project and had signed off on that. But that did include as a piece of it being this conversion. And the purpose that developer had approached us on this is twofold, there's a history here in terms of the town looking at possibly making this a one-way. It's not legal to take that left anyway, if you're coming up Franklin to Adams, it's an illegal left, so the only turn at that point is supposed to be a right-hand turn to head back towards Granite Ave. I wouldn't say everybody abides by that, but that is opposed to no left-hand turn. So it's in terms of an impact on traffic through the neighborhood, it was anticipated or had always been anticipated, something that may actually help with some flow rather than impact it. And then as the project came closer to construction, the developer was looking at ways to minimize truck traffic and truck and truck delays in this area. So their construction management plan included a truck circulation route of coming in off of Granite Ave, onto Adams Street, left onto Franklin, and then into the site, and then exiting the site onto Bassett, back out to Granite Ave, and out of Milton from there. So the goal is to keep that truck traffic as limited as possible throughout the neighborhood. I will note that their Traffic Commission and the developer agreed to conduct some traffic counts once this is underway, to get a sense of what that impact is looking like, particularly on church, and to reevaluate as needed. So the recommendation from the Traffic Commission is to move forward with making Franklin a one-way, again, from Adams to Bassett, as a temporary basis for at least the period of construction, and then evaluate from there whether it should be permanent, but it will be continuously evaluated throughout the project. And that's the action from the select board at this time.
Quick question, how long do we anticipate that to be, time-wise?
So the construction, total construction, starting with abatement, was, I think, about twenty-seven months. Abatement started about two months ago, so it was about a twenty-four to twenty-seven month time period, so another two years. And hopefully it'll not extend past that, and they will be done ASAP.
Any questions?
Does this change, you know, the plan, the the construction plan was to move the barriers back every night?
That will remain, that'll be the plan, the barriers will move. So during the day, the road will be narrowed, that'll impact parking on Franklin. And then after the construction day ends, the barriers will be moved back against the sidewalk, so the road will be wider, the parking will be restored. But in order to maintain access, both emergency access and get traffic through, that will be an impact during construction hours.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Traffic Commission's recommendation for the temporary conversion of Franklin Street to a one-way from Adams to Bassett. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Cohen and all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, next.
Well, now it's eight, so I think we can, you can move to the public hearing.
Okay, so I'd like to open the public hearing for the ascertainment of needs for Stone Peak Cable License Renewal.
Send a motion within a second, or?
We might as well open it with a vote, right, just to be safe. I don't think we need it, but just to be sure.
We don't need it.
Don't need it. So not to open a public hearing, you're right.
Okay.
Right.
Where are you gonna be?
I don't know.
I'm telling you, I'll send you notes from the audience. Something to come up?
Do you want me to read this?
My TV.
That's right. Okay, so I'm gonna just read this. Good eve, this is an opening statement for Cable Public Hearing. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Milton Select Board Public Hearing on RCN's Cable License Renewal. The Select Board is the cable license issuing authority under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter one sixty-six A, and federal and state law requires holding public proceedings to provide public to an opportunity to comment on local cable needs, including the holding of this hearing. By way of background, RCN's cable license expires on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Notice of this hearing was in the local newspaper for two successive weeks, and copies of the legal ads are entered into the record as hearing exhibits one and two. We will receive comments and testimony from the public and interested parties about what cable-related needs and interests are important to the town and public, and about how RCN has performed under its existing license. Before proceeding to public comment, I would like to thank the members of the public for their participation, and thank Milton's local community TV provider, Milton Access TV, for diligent assistance in the cable license renewal process, and also thank RCN for their participation and assistance in the ongoing license renewal process. Comments from the public may address all RCN cable-related matters, including, but not limited to, customer service, license administration, the town's needs regarding the local studio, community programming, and maintaining support for the town's very important local channels and video origination capabilities. Please keep your comments to no longer than three minutes. In lieu of reading, in lieu of reading full statements, you may make a brief comment and then submit your full statement in writing to us. Note that this process of accepting comments on cable needs and interest will remain open until further notice, so that even after closing of tonight's hearing, the public will have further opportunity to submit written statements to the town in care of Nicholas Connors, Assistant Town Administrator by mail or by email, to nconnors@townofmilton.org for the license renewal needed for consideration by the town. At this time, we will proceed with going right to the public comment process. Thank you all, and let us proceed to hear from the public and interested parties.
I would suggest that we invite Shane Brandenburg and Milton Access TV up to open comments. And I will note that for anybody who has submitted them in writing, which we received a number from today, that we've shared those with the select board, those are part of the record. So if you've previously submitted in writing, we do have it already. Thank you.
And there may be some people that already signed in, there's another sheet up there.
Oh, extra.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'll note that Special Counsel Bill August has joined us as well, by Zoom. Hi, Bill.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to testify and participate in this hearing. On behalf of the Milton Access TV Board of Directors and its staff, I want to extend our sincere thank you and appreciation to the members of the Select Board, our Town Administrator and its staff, Attorney Epstein, our loyal supporters and producers, and of course, RCN for this opportunity to speak. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Michael Lynch, I'm the current Vice Chair of the Board of Directors, Milton Access TV. I have to say, and historically, I kind of feel honored to sit here, I started volunteering at Milton Access when I was in middle school, and I worked there when I was in high school and came back when I was in college and was the director for twelve years. I always sat at these hearings with the founding fathers of MATV, so it's quite an honor to be up here making that on their behalf. MPeg Access is the five oh one C three nonprofit nonprofit that oversees Milton Access TV, that provides public education and government services to the town. We're contracted to the Select Board, and it would have been in existence since two thousand and eight. Our members on the Board of Directors are Chair Becky Padera, our own Select Board member, Roxanne Musto, school community member, Anna Bargees, and members Bob Wietz and Bruce Pearson. Our staff is led on the direction of Shane Brandenburg, our Operations Director Tom Pillar, Ted Omo, who is our Director of Editing, and Sean Doyle, our Production Coordinator, Milton Access TV also employees, several part-time employees, and has a well-established internship program at Curry College. Tonight is about the hearing about, tonight is a hearing about the renewal of the RCN Cable License with the Town of Milton. In that license, by law, there are provisions for public access support, which is why I'm here tonight. Tonight, we're joined by handful of our producers and supporters who you'll hear from. And as Mr. Milano said, we've had a number of our friends and supporters submit written testimony for the hearing that's been submitted. Most of our viewers, it's a testament to Milton Access to become so comfortable viewing at home, they're remotely viewing the meeting. Our president is in Arizona right now watching, so I know that a lot of people really value being able to participate and watch our meetings remotely. Tonight is about a need, why does Milton need Milton Access TV? Some of you might think that's an easy answer, or some of you might be wondering, does Milton really need a cable station? Kind of piggybacking off the last presenter, is cable TV a thing anymore? And that's kind of what we're here to talk about. So let's dive into our need. And I want to start by saying to ask yourself some of these questions that I'll present. Have you ever wondered what's happening in Milton's town government? Did you miss an important meeting that you'd want to watch a replay? What about the development going up at the end of your street? Where do you tune in to find out what is happening? Have you ever watched your grandchild's high school graduation live from another state, or have you ever wanted to? Has your child been on the football team, the volleyball team, the hockey team, or been in a championship game, and you have been able to send the game link out to your family members to watch it live or even catch the replay? What about keeping track of what's going on at town meeting? If you're a town meeting member, have you tuned into the preview shows so that you're more informed about the articles to be voted on? What about during a winter storm, instead of waiting for the WBZ ticker of school closings to go by and by and by and by, have you checked your local TV station? Or maybe you're looking for a quick and easy recipe on the way home and can cooking in with Stephanie come to your rescue? If you've answered yes to any of those questions, that proves why we're here tonight. Milton Access needs Milton, and Milton Access TV needs Milton. The mission of Milton Access TV is to provide gavel-to-gavel coverage of Milton's town government to help create hyper-local, high-quality content, and to put tech tools and media into the hands of our residents. For our government meetings, MATV provides unedited, unfiltered looks into our government operations in Milton. We cover over ten boards and committees, help with subcommittee recordings, and make available our resources to get the meeting recordings turned around and on our stations and social media pages within forty-eight hours of a meeting. But knowing my staff, it's usually a few hours, so. MATV covers multiple meetings a night, and we can cover meetings simultaneously. There are two crews out tonight, one crew is here with us today for the Select Board meeting, and another crew is with the Board of Appeals meeting. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our election season programming just one week before the election, but we also help foster election programming. We co-host the annual Milton Speaks Candidates Forum with Milton High School Debate Team, in which the forum is moderated and questions are thought of by the students. It's one of our most respected programs, and Milton Access TV is proud to provide the students with a candidate forum and live TV experience. And on election night, as always, residents can tune in to get these live results when the polls close at eight. In March of two thousand and twenty, when COVID hit and upended all of our daily routines, Milton Access TV stepped in without question to make sure residents were still getting the information they needed in a remote fashion. I can remember the first meeting we broadcasted was a phone with a microphone on a table to get an emergency Select Board message out. And now look at how far we've come. We are sitting in a room that is now a hybrid meeting room. And Milton Access TV was also integral in the coordination directing of the first remote town meeting. No Milton town meeting members were standing in a field or sitting in their cars or in a school spread out. Town meeting was accomplished right here in this room with a core group of people, and all the town meeting members were at home. We also deliver Chromebooks in that time of need. From the testimonials we hear here later, Milton Access TV has their doors open to residents who want to create high-quality content that's reliable to Milton. Some producers have been with us from the beginning, from the days before we had a studio at the Pierce Middle School. Nothing excites our board more than when during our monthly board meeting, it's time to see the half, the staff highlight reel of the past month's activities. Whether Mike Vega's on location at Gillette Stadium, Jackson's giving the live commentary at a hockey game, Suzette's interviewing the newest hit author, the sports highlighted a week, or getting a refresher on recycling and composting from the DPW, Milton Access TV helps provide more than just meeting coverage. Through capital support from the cable providers, Milton Access TV has had the ability to put the most up-to-date, high-tech tools of media into the hands of Milton residents, allowing them to take their ideas from print to picture with ease. Over the last seventeen years, Milton Access TV has built a full production studio and office space at the Pierce Middle School, a full production studio at Milton High School, this room we're in tonight, two conference rooms at Town Hall. And in partnership with the town, the new meeting room at the old fire station will be the newest hybrid meeting room available. The staff has also grown the checkout equipment that's available to the residents of the town, allowing for full productions to be filmed remotely. Finally, one of the best investments, I think, that was made by Milton Access TV is called a Comrex Live Shot. It allows Milton Access TV to broadcast live anywhere there's a cellular network. So that was a big accomplishment for us, I was very proud when we got that. And it really allows us to sort of act like a news station. I mean, we are now, we were limited to a cable, we are limited to a plug on the wall. I can remember the three hundred and fiftieth committee, we had to run a cable from Town Hall across over the gazebo and down to Canton Ave to broadcast, and now we can do it wirelessly. None of these benefits to the residents of Milton would be possible without the capital support we got from the cable providers, so we're very thankful for that. Public access stations are vital to the community they serve, and it wouldn't be possible without the support of the cable subscribers and the franchise agreements. Public access TV, public, it's right in the name, and it's basic core, it's a service by the people for the people. Most towns in the Commonwealth have their own, so when you say Milton Access TV is for Milton residents, by Milton residents, it's really a true reflection of our operation. All of what MATV accomplishes is by a staff of four, a handful of volunteers, and a small budget. Two common themes you've heard tonight are transparency and need. Transparency is the benefit of Milton Access TV, and Milton needs Milton Access TV. In a time of growing uncertainty, cable cutters, and declining revenue, MATV relies heavily on the franchise fees provided to the town from the cable providers. From what you've heard tonight, what you read from the written submissions and hear from a few of our producers, is that Milton needs Milton Access TV to continue to provide the services that we do. The residents value our programming, our service, and our knowledge and expertise and help. We really look forward to the opportunity to work with the Select Board in RCN on the franchise renewal. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to testify tonight, and I can't wait to turn it over to Shane and our producers to hear from them. I just want to thank the Select Board for your service to the town, and your volunteer hours in making Milton the best place to be. So thank you for letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Shane Brandenburg, Executive Director, Milton Access. Michael said quite a lot there, so I will not repeat myself or him. I'm going to actually share a video right now, real quick. There we go. Public Access TV offers a hyper-local look at the community. It offers transparency for local government, showing what decisions are being made and what residents think. It covers the stories and events that larger media outlets never would, shedding light on the good things happening just down the street and in your neighborhood. And it provides a way for connection from anywhere in the world, in a different town, state, or even country. And you want to watch Milton football take the field at Brooks? With Public Access, you can. You! With your support, Public Access can continue to do the work that informs and entertains, inspires, and connects. The work that gives local residents the power to create, educate, share ideas, and foster a deeper bond with the people they call neighbors. Cool. Always fun to look at each other every once in a while. But yeah, just basically to echo what Michael Lynch said and from the video, we're a very, very small group of passionate people, very tenured. I think our shortest employee has been here for seven years now. I, myself, 13. We're very passionate about what we do. We know Milton. We have some people from Milton who are actually on our team. So even as someone who's not from Milton, I think it's great that I get to do something that's fulfilling and just be part of a community that I don't live in, but I love coming to work every single day and seeing what's going to happen here and seeing how we can help the community. And yeah, I think that's it. Like to hear from our producers and people who've come to speak.
Thank you.
Yeah, you said three.
Three minutes, yes. Okay, Suzette Standing, if you'd like to come up, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the chance to speak tonight. A special thanks to Erin Bradley for all she's done. And congratulations on your new adventure. My name is Suzette Martinez-Standring, and for over a decade, I produced and hosted It's All Right with Suzette, a Milton Access TV show about authors, their books, and their writing process. I took a hiatus for the last five years, and I'm happy to report that I'm in remission for lung cancer and that my show is running again. I've seen the growth of MATV from the early days of the staff filming in homes and schlepping cameras, now a state-of-the-art TV studio exists that takes TV shows to a higher level of education, entertainment, and enjoyment. This growth exists because of Milton's positive response. Yes, there is a need for information and community engagement on a local level, which is offered by show hosts and studio staff. Milton is a highly literary and educated town and enjoys its creative programming. MATV allows residents to not only watch local government committees work, but it inspires them to get involved. For example, my show just aired regarding a May 10 fundraiser at Milton High School hosted by firefighters versus cancer, and we are going to give free early cancer screening kits to our Milton firefighters. MATV was a powerful way to get the word out to serve our community. Newspapers are diminishing, social media is slanted and divisive. Milton Access TV is a vital community hub, not only for current events, but also for us to enjoy and to better know our community and our neighbors. I hate the idea of cost-cutting or canceling MATV, which forces our town to look to homogeneous, non-local, corporate media programming. There is so much about Milton that is diverse, interesting, and enriching. Let's allow MATV to not only survive, but to thrive and grow with even greater support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, Jay Funling.
Hello. I'm Jay Funling, 39, Cias Lane. Coming up here to also express my support for MATV. MATV is the primary way that people in town can learn about the activities of our town boards and committees. Without the videos of these meetings, everyone in town would be dependent on either word-of-mouth descriptions or minutes. Word-of-mouth descriptions, no matter how well-intentioned, are always imperfect, and minutes, no matter how thorough, are always incomplete. Video shows you everything that happened at the meetings. The broadcasters their videos on YouTube and Facebook, and the TV channels make the videos very accessible. I've also... I personally have been able to download the videos and turn the audio into a podcast so that people can listen to meetings while driving, washing the dishes, that's what I do, et cetera. None of this would be possible without MATV. And finally, I'd just like to compliment the MATV staff. They're always professional and pleasant to work with. And as you know, many meetings can go late into the night unexpectedly, and they're always there, putting in the hours, no complaints, pleasant to work with. Sometimes people joke or compete about which committee puts in the longest hours. Compared to all of us, the MATV staff blows us all away. So I want to thank the staff and thank them for the product they produce.
Thank you. Yes, you may come up.
I would just like to note that David Von Mortz, who represents RCM's town, is here and watching the meeting. So I appreciate you coming in and being in attendance.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry I didn't sign in.
That's okay.
Good evening. I'm Lynda Lee Sheridan, 57, Clifton Road. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Milton Access TV and the very important role that they play in our community. Sorry. The word "access" in their name really identifies the crux of the importance of the role that they play in our town. Milton Access provides the opportunity for all citizens to be engaged with town government and education by filming meetings of major boards and committees, and town meeting too, that can be watched, often live or on their website, or later on YouTube. School sports and the high school graduation, musical performances, and many other activities are also recorded. Most citizens don't have time to attend all of these meetings or events, but MATV provides them with access to these meetings that wouldn't otherwise be possible. At a time in our community when transparency is increasingly important to us... I'm so sorry. Milton Access TV is the vehicle that can bring information to light for us. They also provide educational training, as has been said previously, in different media areas, including editing, studio, and field production filming, as well as original programming by Milton residents. This is access to free training and information programming, like cooking and learning about our town. History was made in 2012 when Milton celebrated our 350th anniversary, and Milton Access TV was there to record it. As one of the organizers of Milton Music Fest and Fireworks and Celtic Sunday, held each year on the fourth weekend of June, we are truly grateful to the coverage that Milton Access TV provides for this event. One quick call to Shane to tell him the date, and we can rest assured that this event will be truly appreciated by all Milton residents. Hours and hours of live musical performances are recorded and accessible on YouTube following the event. Shane Brandenburg, the Executive Director, and his team of Tom Pillah, Ted Omo, and the many students and volunteers who help with filming are the easiest people to work with.
Thirty seconds.
I find them professional and go above and beyond when filming so that the organizers are supported while the viewers can access the event from their home at a later date or time. I know I speak for many who appreciate the programming of Milton Access TV, and it's an honor to speak tonight in support of this critical media center for Milton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Anybody on the board? Any comments? Mr. Cohen?
I did want to comment. It is critical, and one of the speakers had mentioned community engagement, and it's critical. I was at an event the other night, and it was joked that it wouldn't be possible without you, that their meetings were must-see TV, and that wouldn't be possible without you. And I'd also like to say hi to my wife. Hiya. But anyway, I think it's critical also. I do. Thank you. Thank you.
I would just like to add, I sit on the Board of MATV, and they do a fantastic job. And Shane, for every meeting, always has a terrific reel to show us of highlights of what's been going on, you know, sports and plays and all sorts of things. So they do a terrific job. And as was mentioned before, they're often up, you know, setting up before we get here, and they're breaking it down when we leave. Some of these nights are long nights, and they're doing it, you know, many nights a week. There are many meetings, different locations. So I think they do a terrific job. And it's important for the community because, you know, people like to watch these meetings and find out what's going on. They don't always read a paper, but they'll watch it on TV. Thank you.
We did have somebody raise their hand.
Sure.
So John Ling, I'll allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for giving me a moment. And I promise to be brief. I did submit a letter of support, and I promised not to read it here, but all of the folks that have spoken have talked about the great work that the MATV crew have done. I want to take it just from a slightly different angle. And Michael mentioned my son, Jackson, who has been fortunate enough to work with Tom and Shane, and the great team at MATV for the past several years, being able to announce the girls' and boys' hockey games, the football games, as well as the baseball games. But one of the things that has stood out to my wife and I the most is the feedback that we've received from the fans and the parents at the games, really talking about how much it means to their extended families, to their parents, the grandparents of the kids, who get the ability to be able to watch these games and kind of follow along with their grandchildren's sports when they're not able to make it live, either for personal reasons or health concerns. And that feedback has just been tremendous. Tom and the team taking Jackson under their wing at such a young age. He's only 12 years old now and has been doing this now for three years, and some of the insights that they've given him, that's really been the biggest takeaway for my wife and I and for Jackson as well, is just the feedback and the support, or the feedback rather, from the parents and the fans about how much this truly means to them to be able to watch the livestream, even when they may not be in the Milton township. So just wanted to say thank you to the whole team, and thank you for giving me a minute to speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? So are we keeping this open, then, the meeting? I mean, the hearing?
The public hearing can be closed now with the motion and the vote, but as noted in the statement, you know, we continue to accept comments to speak to the need that exists in terms of ensuring funding from the cable providers continues to flow to Milton and to Milton Access TV.
Okay, take a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, discussion, update, approval, annual town meeting, Monday, May 5, Tuesday, May 6, Wednesday, May 7. The warrant, articles, review, and discussion. Any discussion on these?
And not... I don't have anything this evening. Members do, certainly, but I...
Anybody else?
The warrant has been printed, dropped at the mailbox. Hopefully, folks will start to get them in the mail. It's available on the town website as well. The Town Report, actually, is also available on the town website now, and it's also in the mail to town meeting members now. I got the warrant in the mail today?
I did too.
I did too.
Yep.
The other day?
I got it the other day, so you're good.
That was a quick turnaround. Last year's took forever to arrive, so that makes me very happy.
I do. I remember that, too. I remember the days when the warrant was like a small little book. I do like the bigger book. It was hard to like open it.
Dues you to take notes.
Yeah. Much better.
Yes.
All right. So we've done that. Okay, discussion, update, approval, special town meeting, June 16, and warrant articles are on here. I'd like to speak to that, Mr. Milano.
Yes, thank you. So we have received from the Planning Board two warrant articles that are listed here. The East Milton Overlake District's Bylaw Amendment and the Floodplain Bylaw Amendment. The Planning Board is meeting with the Warrant Committee tomorrow night to discuss those two warrant articles. It was mentioned in public comment tonight about why an MBTA Community's article isn't listed here. We have not received one. I didn't want to start listing it until it's received. I can do that going forward if the Board would like me to, but you know, that was the purpose of the June special town meeting. We do expect an article to be submitted. The Planning Board held a forum last week, last Thursday, presented a few different options. So they're meeting Thursday night. Hope that they'll narrow those options then as well. But we do expect an article related to MBTA community zoning for the June special town meeting. And then the other ones that I've listed, I don't have a draft yet on the alcohol on town property one. That was based on the public hearing at our prior meeting. We've received some further feedback on that, so I'll work on a draft and circulate it to members if there's an interest in having that included in the June meeting. I did include three others here I'd just like to speak to briefly. An article to accept Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 57, to allow denial or revocation of licenses and permits for failure to pay municipal taxes or charges. So this is a special act that can be implemented in a community if the town meeting so votes, to accept it and to establish a bylaw to that effect. So it would enable the town to refuse to issue permits or issue licenses if a property owner is delinquent on property taxes or other municipal fines or charges. The law and the bylaw is pretty standard. It has to be specific. The one variable is the duration of that delinquency, which would trigger the denial or revocation of anything. So we've drafted it as a six months. If you're six months behind in property taxes, then you can't come into the Building Department and get a permit until either you get into a payment plan with the town or make full payment. There are a few significant property tax cases out there that are moving through the system to get those, but it's just another tool to encourage payments of those taxes beyond just going through a foreclosure proceeding. So that's the first one. The second one is related to veterans' property tax exemptions. The state legislature approved some changes to veterans' property tax exemptions last fall, so we're looking at that. I don't have a warrant article tonight for review with specificity, but there are two tweaks that would increase... would allow veterans' exemptions to increase with the CPI index or with inflation. So right now, they're a static number. If the town were to accept this, it could increase yearly with inflation. And the other one is to just increase the overall exemption limit that is allowed. But we've noticed in cleaning up some of the tax exemptions that there may be other local options that the town has not discussed in some time that might be worth discussing some more. So I'll come back with a full list of what those could be and our recommendations on that. And then lastly, kind of all related here, there is a special law, a special act, Mass General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 3D, where there could be a question on tax bills that ask if you would... that ask if you would like to make a donation to an elderly, it's called an elderly and disabled taxation fund. So if you would like to make a contribution to that, the money will flow to a fund, which would then be administered by a committee, the members of which are stipulated by the law. So this would be a way to ask for voluntary donations that could then be provided to those in need to, to assist in property tax payments. So I included that in the packet. I don't have a presentation to provide more background, but if that's something of interest and the board would like me to continue to work on that, we can come back with a more concrete proposal. So these last three, I'm just looking, really looking for feedback, and if, if there is interest in potentially pursuing these, then we can develop them further and bring them back for a more detailed discussion about them.
Any comments?
I have a couple, I have a couple comments.
Sure. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you. So I think that those last three should absolutely be looked into more. Anything we can do to help our elderly and disabled with their property taxes, that would be amazing. And I like the fact that if you don't pay your taxes in six months, you can't get a building permit. We might actually get some people paying their taxes. My question is about the MBTA communities and the fact that it's not on here. When does it, when do we need to have this before? I, I'm looking for a couple of things. One, I'm going to look for a timeline of when it needs to be for the warrant. So when does the select board need to see it to get it out to make the warrant? And two, where are we in the MBTA process? The final regs came out, they were promulgated correctly. I know that the planning board had, I was at the meeting, they had three recommendations. Only one of them is compliant. So I'm wondering, is there talks? Is there what's going on? And what is the timeline?
So timeline, we're already running up against it. So ideally, and I reached out to the chair of the planning board this week just to kind of reiterate. So what I had said, and that was, we expect the print, the warrant to go to the printer May 14th. So that will give us ample time to have it printed in the mailbox. For a special town meeting, it has to be in mailboxes 14 days before the town special, so a little bit longer of a duration for us to meet. So if, if we have it printed on May 14th and delivered to the post office that week, we should, that should give us enough wiggle room if anything were to go wrong. So, but that's not necessarily a deadline to have an article because the warrant committee should have it, have had an opportunity to review it and comment on it, and for those comments to also be printed in the warrant. So really, we're talking in the next, in a perfect world, it would be Thursday at their meeting.
This Thursday?
The planning board would say, this is the plan, we're going to submit it to the select board. I don't think that's based on their public forum and they're still soliciting feedback. I don't think that's fully realistic. And then with the town election and town meeting, it gets tricky. So I, I believe that they are planning to meet May 8th, the week of town meeting. So if, if, if the article is not ready by May, by this week, I think May 8th would be the next opportunity that we'd have to have resolution on that. And that would still be a tight turnaround for the warrant committee and for their comments to be fully ready and printed in the warrant. So it's been tricky with the special town meeting rolling right into budget season, rolling into the annual, rolling into the June special. So I think we all recognize that, but I, time is slipping away in terms of having an opportunity to have, I don't thi, I'm not worried about having an article. It's more about the planning board just wrapping up their final pieces and deciding which version to go with. It's more about having that opportunity to meet with the warrant committee, engage with the warrant committee, and have them write their comments. So it's, the timeline is ASAP, May 14th, where the warrant will be going to the printer. In terms of status, yes, final regulations came out April 14th. The, there has been no real substantive change from my perspective in what those regulations, what the regulations are, what the emergency regulations were, and what the guidelines were before that. So Milton, in the eyes of HLC and the regs, is a rapid transit community. There, that's the expectation that I believe the state is looking for from Milton. While we submitted comments in the regulatory process about the town's classification, the select board's comment letter was very much focused on classification. The planning board's letter focused on classification, a lot about the more technical kind of zoning-related items. Those were submitted. We did have a meeting with HLC, as you mentioned, where we again advocated and talked about classification. That was prior to the regs being established. That was back in March, and unfortunately, or depending on how you look at the situation, the regs are what they are. So the question is, in terms of the process with the state, we are a rapid transit community. There are certainly other options the town can pursue, but right now, all indications are the town is, and HLC is, is sticking to that, to that definition of classification.
Okay. Thank you.
How does the, how does the unfunded mandate fit into this picture?
So it's been declared to be an unfunded mandate, and what that portends is, is an open question. So a few communities, as we've discussed briefly before, did file preliminary injunctions related to, or requests for injunctions related to the unfunded mandate question and other items related to the promulgation of the regulations and how the regulations work. There, a couple of those cases were consolidated in Plymouth Superior Court. There was a hearing held on April 2nd. Briefs were submitted by both the towns involved and the Commonwealth, but as of earlier today, still no decision has been rendered in that. So that will be the first indication of if the courts, how the courts may rule on that question, and if they, and depending on how they rule, what that impact is. Still a bit of an open question, what that might mean. And the auditor's letter did note that they're doing some continued fiscal analysis to arrive at a full accounting as well. So there may be more of an unfunded mandate potentially, or less of an unfunded mandate, depending on what their final analysis determines.
Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Ms. Musto. I'm, I'm mindful that we're on, you know, the, the subject here is the warrant for June. My, I, I guess my, my recommendation would be that we should probably have some sort of a filler to indicate that we're expecting to receive something from the planning board. I was also, and I know Ms. Musto was as well, at the meeting that Ms. Bradley was at, that the planning board held to present their plans. The, in, in the comments at that meeting, the, the planning board suggested that it was the select board that put the article forward for this, but my understanding is it's the planning board puts it forward for us to include in the warrant. So it's not something that we, we are, we are waiting for their work to then include into the warrant. So I just want folks to be cognizant of the fact that it's the planning board that puts forward the work that we then include in the warrant.
The select board may.
May.
We can, right.
Yes, right. But I think in this case, we are expecting that.
Unless, unless we've been doing work that I'm not aware of. I don't think we're planning on doing that. Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or?
Yeah, just to close loop on timeline, while there, there is a need for the planning board to hold a public hearing, I think it's 10 days prior to the town meeting, they are planning to schedule that, and I know a draft legal ad is being worked on. So they are putting all the, everything into motion. It's just a question of when that final article will be received, when the warrant committee can begin its work as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll go on to number 11, discussion, update, approval, letter to the Executive Office of Health and Human Services regarding hospital capacity and ongoing impacts of recent hospital closures. So I don't know if you want to talk about it or?
Sure. Yeah, I'd have to. So I just, so we included in the packet the Board of Health's letter on this, on this matter, and then I know we've had this on the agenda for a couple of meetings here, but in the meantime, the state has responded. I included that response from the Mass Department of Public Health to Milton in the packet, and they've offered to have a conversation and to connect with the town related to some of the issues that Health Department raised in its letter. So we plan to take them up on that, and we'll follow up with the select board after that conversation. So no action tonight, but appreciate their reaching out and offering to, to connect with the town.
And just as a follow-up for that, just so everyone knows, we, the letter that the Board of Health sent out was January, maybe, maybe beginning of February, end of January, and we just got this letter April 2nd, so it was quite a long time. And I think after reading it, there are some concerns, I would say, in it that things, certain things weren't really mentioned clearly in here. And I think for the residents in Milton, it's very important with regards to hospital bed capacity because, as you know, I, I work in healthcare and I see what's going on, on a receiving end of things, and from families, I hear the stories of the local hospitals within the catchment area, including Milton, Inneedum, and Norfolk County, that there is a real need for hospital beds, and people are waiting days in the emergency room to get an actual bed. And then once they get in, oftentimes people aren't, they, they discharge them sometimes a little too early, and it's almost like a revolving door for some. So I think, I, I would love to see a conversation around that. I think it's very important because, you know, we care about the health of our community and want to make sure that residents can get into the hospital and admit it if they need to be in a timely manner. Thank you. Okay. So next, these are a bunch of one-day liquor licenses.
Madam Chair, would you like me to do my speed reading?
Sure. I like that. Speed reading's great. Go ahead.
I'd like to move, and can we do these collectively or we have to do them individually?
We can read them all.
Read them all, I think.
Okay. Let's read them all. Move to approve the following one-day liquor licenses. First parish Milton located at 535 Canton Avenue, May 3rd, 2025, from 6:30 to 9, oh yeah, 6:30 PM to 9:40 PM. Milton creates community arts festival. Catholic parish is the Blue Hills, St. Pius 10th, located at 101 Walcott Road, May 10th, 2025, from 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM for trivia night. Glenn Pavlichek for We Are Milton, June 28th, 5 PM to 10:30 PM, and June 29th, 2 PM to 8 PM for Milton Music Festival. That's it.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, number 13, discussion, approval, youth task force change and membership request to add a parks commissioner, Ted Carroll, to the youth task force. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, but I want to just say, it's not parks, it is park commissioner.
That's what the motion says.
Mine says parks.
Yours says S, too.
Yeah.
So there's no S.
Right.
You, you can, I just looked at that.
It's true. Actually, no, it says parks commissioner here.
It really is. It really is a park commissioner. It's not parks. So anybody who's got parks is wrong. You should get a marker. Okay. So I would like to make a motion to add Ted Carroll, the park commissioner, to the youth task force.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Do we have to appoint him then for, in a separate motion or no? We have to amend the charge and then we have to appoint him? Sorry.
That, no, that's a good observation. I think maybe just revise the motion to add a position to be represented by the Board of Park Commissioners and then appoint Ted into that position.
Yep. No problem. So I'm going to revise my motion, and I'm going to ask that we make a motion to approve a park commissioner to be added to the youth task force, and then I would like to appoint Ted Carroll, the park commissioner, to said youth task force.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 14, discussion, town administrator evaluation.
Everybody got theirs in?
No.
Who hasn't gotten theirs in?
Well, they're also, so Richard's supposed to tally them.
They're supposed to, right, but it's supposed to go to Carla. So we don't know if people have gotten them in. Am I the only person that has gotten this in? This is a real shame. This is a real shame.
Well, this actually probably should have been done when you had your new contract back when.
Well, you could do an annual report.
It should have, and he's been bringing it up now for at least two or three months.
I will pick up the sword for Erin at the next meeting, and I'll maybe ask.
So we could ask for an agenda item.
Yeah. Let's, let's put it as an agenda item for the next one, and maybe we can have Carla send a sternly worded email to the select board requiring us to, to do that.
That would be a nice reminder.
Yes.
I think that would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get it done.
Yes.
So it'll be an agenda item under number 20. We'll add that in.
Sorry, Nick, I was busy approving 19 executive committee meetings.
Light reading. All right. Next, number 15, discussion, approval, meeting minutes, March 11th, 2025, and March 25th. Do we need to take these separate or can they?
Yeah, I wasn't there on the 25th. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 11th, 2025.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Erin, second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And March 25th?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 25th, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay. All right. Town administrators' report.
Thank you. Just a reminder, a town election is a week from today, April 29th. If you did choose to vote by mail, just a reminder, return that either by mail by the end of the day on April 29th, or you can, can bring it to town hall. Town clerk's office will be open, the drop box will be open and checked right at 8 o'clock. As we mentioned earlier, the town meeting warrant has arrived in mailboxes, thankfully. It's also available on the town website. We sent out a blast through the town website that that was posted last week. Likewise, the Town Report is available on the town website under the Town Reports page. Just a reminder for town meeting members and anybody who may be elected to town meeting, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of Week 1 this year. If necessary, if we need a third night, we can certainly wrap it up sooner if folks would like. But Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, not Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Oh, okay.
We have re-advertised the building commissioner position after working to get that position closer to market. So if anybody's interested in the building commissioner position, that has been reposted. We are working through for vets, Veterans Service Officer with the town of Randolph for our regional district. Interviews are well underway, and we're working a waiting shortlist for recommended for final interviews for that, and hopefully we'll have that wrapped up soon. I, I know Kevin had written a letter in the Milton Times this week, and I just wanted to just, again, thanks Kevin for his service, and just reiterate that the town is part of a district with Randolph. It has served us well. We, we look forward to continuing that and, you know, and opportunities to regionalize. We want to pursue their opportunities to work together with our communities around us, save costs, and provide good services. And I, I just wanted to point out one piece in that, in Massachusetts, the law that every city and town have a Veterans Service Officer, it's a requirement that that person be a full-time employee, or that a municipality, municipality be part of a district. So the option in front of Milton is to hire a full-time Veterans Agent or to be part of a district with Randolph and share their costs. We have for many years now chosen to share that district, which a lot of communities do, and which we continue to look forward to doing. And lastly, just, we did, as this board knows, apply for a grant, an NG manager through a grant program that the Mass Save Program put out. We partnered with Randolph on that grant application, and we were successful, and have been awarded a three-year grant for a NG manager with the town of Randolph. So some good news on the grant front, which has been not so much good news lately, but we appreciate the Mass Save Program's support and for our partners in Randolph in that application. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to do an acting chairs' report, and I'm going to say, I wanted to wish Ms. Bradley at her last meeting here with me as one of the other female on the, females on the board, I wanted to wish her well and congratulate her. congratulate her. She's going to law school and, what do you have, another year?
One more year.
One more year. So I wish her well. It's always been a very spirited conversation, having Erin on the board or Ms. Bradley on the board. So I do want to wish you well with everything. And thank you for your service, for being on here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. And next, public comment response. Do we have anybody?
Can I say a few words?
Sure.
Thank you so much. I wanted to thank the folks that came forward and all of you for the kind words and Richard last week for his words. I did want to just, I wanted to say a few things. I've been a volunteer, an elected official, for the last eight years for the Town of Milton. For those of you that don't know, I am a single mom and I have my kids on Mondays and Tuesdays every week. For the first five years, I served on the warrant committee, which met on Monday nights, and we meet on Tuesday nights. So I have missed many meals with my kids. They have macaroni and cheese and chicken nuggets back on Mondays, and now Bobby eats raviolis on Tuesdays. So I just, I wanted to say that I didn't do this, and I never have done this, just for, just for anything other than to give back to this town. From the day I was elected to the select board, I started receiving horrible emails about my sexuality. And I'm proud to say that I am the first openly out LGBTQ member to serve on the select board. It's not something I would ever hide, and it's something that I am proud of and I hope inspires our young folks that they can also be out and open, and it's okay. I have received multiple people that have stood in front of my house for months on end yelling at me anytime that I left my house because of a mistake that I made a couple years ago. It's funny, I mentioned it to John the other day, and he said, what's the big deal? Everybody swears. And I just want to say, yes, John, everybody does. So thank you for that because I put up with a lot during that time in that summer. Yeah, it was really hard with people yelling at me, yelling at my children. And so I will not miss that. But I wanted to say some thank yous before I left because if I didn't, this is probably my last time I'll be able to do this. So I wanted to start with thank you to Milton Access TV, to all you guys in that room over there. Thank you. If you notice, I'm a pro at turning my microphone off and on now. And I hope that I will always hold the record of the most views of any show ever. So thank you guys for all that you do all the time, I really appreciate it. I wanted to thank the town employees, all of you who do the work. It's a tough job. When I was running three years ago, I went and met with every town director that would meet with me, and one of the guys said, he's now long gone, but he said, you know, you're the first person, I've been here for 19 years, and you're the first person that's ever came and sat with me. And I just want to say to all of them that your work matters, and I really appreciate it, I know how hard it is. I wanted to call out Rob Mallett, who is just the greatest IT guy on the planet. Thank you, Rob. I wanted to call out the Clerk's Office, Gail and Sue, who have always not only just been fabulous at getting things done for our town, but have also just been cheery. And I don't know how they do it because they are the cheery people on the planet, so thank you. To our newly elected or appointed treasurer, Johanna, thank you for diving in and figuring out our books. On the select board, I wanted to thank Lynn, who has just been amazing. I don't think we would all function without Lynn, and she doesn't get enough credit for what she does. And so thank you, Lynn, for everything. To Amy, who's not here, but Amy and I have worked together for eight years on budgets. I will miss our conversations and knowing where all the money trees are. I know people don't like me calling that, but I think it's, you've got to laugh at some things. And then, of course, to Nick, I really enjoyed working with you. You have given me hope again in the next generation of folks giving back to public service and going for these ridiculous jobs working in small towns. So thank you, Nick. And thank you to Anne Marie Fagan, who I worked with briefly, but thank you, Anne Marie, for all you taught me. To all of you guys, it has been a pleasure working with you. Thank you, Roxanne, for coming to LGBTQ Pride Day that first year. I really appreciated that. It meant a lot to me. So thank you for that. I wanted to specifically call out Arthur, Mike, and Ben for always using your privilege to advocate for those of us that don't have that voice. So thank you to the three white guys who have always used your voice for those of us that are less fortunate. To the women who worked so hard, all of them back three years ago to get me elected, to get me here, to give me confidence to do this, thank you, thank you, thank you. To my brothers and sisters in the black and brown community, thank you for standing next to me when I was scared to stand by myself. I couldn't have done a lot of things without you. I have always thought that the only opinion that matters is my family's opinion, so I'm just going to close with my parents or my family. My dad, every time I would come home from select board meeting, would come out of his little space and clap his hands. He won't tonight because the Red Sox are on and I never, I never get to go before the Red Sox in my house. So thanks to my dad for always thinking that I was doing the right thing and talking through some of the concerns that would come through it. To my daughter Carolyn, who is so happy that after eight years I am finally done doing these meetings. She got to see what a strong woman looks like when the town is coming after somebody for making a mistake. And I think it taught her a lot of lessons and also showed her how difficult it is to be a woman who has a voice that sometimes people don't like. And last, to my son Bobby, who has eaten raviolis and peas every Tuesday for the last three years. I'm looking forward to us having dinners together again. And I thank you for your support that you've given me every Tuesday night. You give me a hug every time I leave the house, so thank you for that. It has been a true honor to serve eight years working on our town's budget. I am probably, outside of Amy Dexter, the longest person who's been working with our budget. And I just really appreciate it. I appreciate this town. I moved to this town because it is exactly what I wanted. It's how I grew up in a small community. My kids can ride their bikes. It's just, I've made some of the best friends I'll ever have living in this town. So thank you, thank you to everybody. And please go vote, April 29th. It matters. Community engagement matters. And then after you vote, go sign up for a committee because we have a lot of openings. And I'm going to keep saying that till the cows come home, that we should have more people on those committees. So thank you, everybody, thank you to all of you guys, and good night.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have two executive sessions. I believe the second is, which one are we not having? The second one, correct?
Correct, we can skip item 22.
Okay, so 22. So we're going to go into.
The future meeting dates.
Oh, sorry about that. Future meeting dates, Wednesday, April 30th, which is an organizational meeting, and then the town meeting dates Monday the 5th, Tuesday the 6th, Wednesday the 7th. Oh, future agenda items.
Does the 30th work at 7?
Yes.
The swearing and ceremony, I believe, is at 6, if I remember right. So then a brief meeting at 7 is okay on the 30th?
It works for that?
It doesn't matter. It works for me. All right, just fine.
And that'll be at.
Finally.
Just right at Town Hall.
At Town Hall, okay.
All right. So we'll keep that if anything's changed, just let me know.
All right, and then future agenda items. We talked about your evaluation, Nick. Is there anything else? Anybody has?
At this point, really just working towards this June town meeting.
Okay, very good. So we're going to go into executive session. We, as we said a minute ago, we're not going to go in for number 22, we're going to go in for number 21. So I'm going to move to adjourn from the open session and enter executive session to approve executive session minutes, meeting minutes dated March 11th, 2024, March 12th, 2024, March 15th, 2024, March 26th, 2024, April 23rd, 2024, May 28th, 2024, June 30th,